October twelfth, twenty twenty-three Prairie Grove Funding Commission meeting to order for order business of the approval of the September fourteenth minutes.
Motion we approve the minutes of September fourteenth?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes that presented any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? Uh, I'm two condition you permit to build a residential structure in a B two zone at one away West Thurman by Alex here. This is what we had a.
What we talked about last month, then that's mainly the empty lot on Thurman Street. You got any question for Alex? Your plan is to build a single family residence?
Yes, sir, it is.
Most of the structures in the neighborhood currently are either single family or duplex.
Will it require additional bearings because of the lot size later?
Because of V two, there aren't really any strict provisions with lot size. So what we've done in the past is we just applied the R two standards to the lot. As far as setbacks.
I'm just considering business right now.
Cause there are, there are some commercial properties in that neighborhood, so it's always been mixed use and years ago, instead of trying to figure out what to do with the odd quads that was there, cause there was some heavy commercial with the sawmill, there's some stored buildings in the commercial store building. They just made it all V two. And I disagree with the decision, but it's been like that for thirty years or forty years.
If you look at where it is, we just sound, we have the canyon back.
Yeah, so it had a bunch of mixed uses in it.
But now it's the primary residential.
Like in my.
For housing essentially what it is now.
Now we have an issue.
Sure, I'm looking up the street, cause I can't even remember exactly where it's at, but.
Just west of what used to be Jones Lumber Company.
If you turn around on Thurman Street off of Mock Street, it's like, there's an apartment building that Joe was here just built, two story truck next to it. Actually towards that property, right?
Yes.
Man, that would be pretty.
It, it should, I mean, Armenian is a fits in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a big improvement on what's there.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a duplex, just a single home, or is it?
Shouldn't be a single home, two story.
Okay, I'm just curious. Didn't change my decision, I think, kind of bomb out with it, but I'm just curious what you're planning on.
Oh, I'll have to answer your questions as long as I know the answer.
I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve conditional use permit.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign? You are good.
Thank you for your time.
Look, look.
Uh, next up is space build request for Selay Meadows by Blake Murray.
I've got it up on just.
Oh, cool. Yeah, Blake Murray, the craft control, uh, nothing too contentious tonight, sorry.
You've already approved a preliminary plot for this, obviously, so really all Blake is here, I think they made a decision that they want to phase it.
Yes, sir, that's true. I mean, the, the southern portion of this range, the lift station, being that lift stations typically take a fair amount of time to put together and get approved and everything tested. Wanted to, uh, see if we could get phase one, being all the gravity lots that bring in or to the existing, uh, lift station in Mountain View.
And they've already started some dirt work on, I guess, both phases, but as far as term works concerned.
Right.
So they're already making progress on that, that aspect of it.
How wide of a phase or time gap are you looking?
Not, not long, I mean, basically continuing to work, but just knowing that that lift station, you know, when they start, it's probably gonna take six months and really face one's not gonna take that long, so. I would think they'll just keep working and everything, but we'll draw the phase, we'll, we'll go to where we have fire hydrants and manholes labeled on this plan. Uh, there's fifty-one lots proposed in phase one, and then there'd be a hundred and five in phase two, my account was correct.
We don't have a two exit solution.
Yes.
You know, issue with them?
Were we? I'm trying to remember if we asked them to move something last time I never.
Yes, sir, it was that.
There's another one, we realigned that one.
And there was, it was a north street for the one across from Mountain View.
Yeah, you wanted to connect it to the.
And then one on the north was to Mountain View, right?
Uh, no, it's, it's actually farmland to the, it's basically for future connections, anything that might develop.
What about to the north?
Oh, yes, 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 it is.
And we asked, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I was trying to remember. Okay. Does it change anything for the city? I mean.
It, it doesn't, uh, on the utility side, and Chuck's down here talking about it. I mean, they'll have to get the whole utility plan approved by the health department as the whole project anyway. Uh, as far as phasing, it's concerned, they'll just stop at points that they can stop until they build the rest of it.
The road improvements on Butler? Will that be completed with phase one? Is, so that would be a nice thing.
It's actually under way.
Good. So I mean, that, that'd be a benefit if that was all completed with phase one.
Yeah, if you drive through there right now, it's kind of narrow, cause there's cones all the way up through there.
Yeah. It changes, changes nothing that we already believe in. Slows it down a hair, and just a hair, but it allows them to kind of clean up around Butler too, right? And finish that up and get a couple homes started, kind of block the construction.
This, uh, any really, you know, marking point, anything slows things down, or that's a good thing.
I, I make a motion to approve it then.
Aye.
Have a motion and second to approve, uh, request to phase, uh, Selay Meadows, any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
I do have a question for you, Blake.
Can I have a question too?
Go, Murray. What is the correct pronunciation of Salem?
Uh, Salem.
Salem, yeah.
At least it's how I've always read it in the Bible, when it says Salem in like Psalms, I think it's.
I wasn't sure if that's where it came from, but that's the word.
Yeah. Um, one question I didn't have, when I brought a final plat through a couple of years ago for Prairie View, uh, we finalized it slightly before the streets were paved, is something like that possible with this assuming a bond in place?
Let me look at that, I'll, I'll let you know.
Sure. Um, that's, that's a request we'd like to make, but yeah, y'all obviously talking.
It depends on when it happens, because, uh, that will not be an option in the near future, but it hasn't been yet, so.
So I need to ask for it next month.
Maybe.
Awesome, well, thank you all for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, now.
You made it.
Yeah, to apologize for being here.
Look, 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 there's our next.
Do we adjourn, or do we?
Uh, that's done next slide, this is part of the meeting.
She's got it on the agenda.
Okay, sure.
Good time.
That's true, that, that might be the fastest one.
That's true.
Juliet, you need a computer?
Hey, Alex.
There you go.
What would you like to say?
Uh, just anywhere where we can. Yeah, around there.
Man, do that thing.
The one that I. The one that you're.
Damn. I, I.
The part of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Technically, we don't have a jury yet, so. Keep going, yes. I'll sit back and watch.
It's really.
I just got used to it.
That's what, that's what.
The non-occasional.
Yes.
I do, yeah.
Give you the abbreviated.
That says I'm sorry.
Sorry. There definitely was.
After you had it. Are you? Yeah, I'll say.
Did I get the last one? I didn't know.
Boys are all gonna be bad. Where it must be. He puts that. Thanks, Rob.
Yeah.
Yeah, if she wasn't on the phone with Janet for the first time, yeah, I can't say how. Oh, we knew you were coming.
So later on, I think that's the reason. I'll spill it. All of that. They got zero to that. I'm honestly, I, I tell you why I'm here.
Next few is.
Stand by, thanks for that show. We're up into that mode of mobile, we didn't know it's a train that now.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we saw you.
That one. We're actually going to that part there. I think the thing is six feet.
I.
I didn't was.
There we go.
No, it's.
You didn't like it, you say about that part though.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm gonna send y'all the digital version, but this is all your documents, you have your district document. And then I've got it, done with stractors and everything, but it was. I can't sort of do it in rebo stractor, so what I did was, you know, basically it just. Everything's about that. You know, but we printed. I do, I've got some questions to say, so that I want to go over with you. Um, one of the primary things that we did, uh, the. Also, it is, we went ahead and pulled like all the area table, um, stuff, I also like. See up here, like everyone, it's like your minimum lot square footage, your setbacks and all that for continued zones. What we're doing is we're putting them in a table, right now I have a color code to match, you know, the map with the, with the new zones, but, um, you can insert the table into your code, and then to me, it's nice, we have one place where you can see all the districts and their regulations, you know, in relation to one another. And, and to me, the need of what, most of what we want to talk about tonight is here in this.
And as far as the requirements set out in this table now, it's strictly based on square footage, there's no minimal lot width or anything like that, or is there?
I did take out minimum lot width.
They wanted that taken out.
They did want to take it out? Wow. Five gold stars for you.
The only thing they're concerned about is.
They're speaking.
And as a thought, if they give the, the flexibility to lay out their lots and you don't care what size they're hard blown, but you can back them down.
Okay, all right, well, I didn't know that, so I did keep a minimum square footage spot.
And on that, what we're doing now.
It does, okay, so I can change it to just script the density if you want me to.
With the exception of if we take the R one seven five out, which I think. Where are we? I think the council still wants that out.
They still want it out?
That sounded correct. I'll understand. My question, that last discussion, Alex?
I don't believe so, yeah. I think Juliet tried her.
You're right. I don't think we were successful.
So you're gonna, you're as small as.
Will be our.
Eight thousand? Oh, well, can we talk and drop them out on this? Other than that, that's, that's a big.
I agree, and I do, I don't, I do, I understand the premise of just dealing with smaller lots, plant unit developments, and I think that's what they want to do. But, uh, you're gonna have half engineering in here probably next month, trying to get you, convince you on phase two Hudson Heights to let them go down to at least eight thousand square foot. Of course, the first phase of that was R one, and they're pretty much saying they can't do phase two if it's R one right now with the costs that they are, but. I thought the only thing to do is kind of make his case, I said they were pretty adamant on first phase with the R one.
So, okay, well. So basically, what you want is anything that is less than eight thousand square feet.
Goes to the.
Not what I want, what they want. What, what?
What he wants?
What?
That's the planning, the fighting commission, city council.
We talked about some specific things that we can do that would be, you know, the, where they could, you could allow it by right if they agreed to be, you know, to be alley loaded, dedicate like a specific amount of free space. Would you be open to that? And then if they don't want to meet those standards, when they get picked to a pod?
Before you have a brain flash on it? Explain all that.
No, we want to. Yeah.
It's like, I know we need different options, but at the same time, it's like, I don't, I don't want. Uh, the, I mean, it's the density, a lot of it's the density, it's to build the town, it's the density, like, it's hard, if it's already there, so they can do it. It's hard to defend against it when it becomes too much. And that's the main thing that the people that we represent complain about, talk about, you know, where's, where's this level of housing? Why is it just this? Or why are lots this? Why are we so cramped in here? Why can't we walk in the streets here? You know, all these things, that's like.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be honest with you though, when I, when I drive through an R one five.
Just saying.
Subdivision in a R one seven five, can't hardly tell the difference.
You're usually talking about like a net total of like, you know, if you're talking about like a whole subdivision, you know, maybe like four, six additional houses.
On a hundred lot subdivision, the difference would be probably ten come on.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very things ideal, you know?
Seven to ten, depending on how much space per street.
And so, I mean, I guess, to me, that's the real question. It's like, is that what you think, we take those last seven to ten houses, that's, that's what's gonna kill everything?
So can I ask you the opposite question? Cause obviously, the, the remarks, they have been pretty strong on that, but, but obviously you're pretty strong on the opposite, so. Not having, uh, seven to ten houses, like, what is the negative on, on your field for, for keeping the one seven five?
Well.
Cause it, it really just comes down to the development in it, will they?
Affordability, I think affordability.
Affordability is key, right? You're gonna price a lot of people out of your community. And I think that that has, you know, we talked about, that has consequences into the future, right? What you do is you narrow your community down to like a one demographic. And I think, I don't think that's good.
But with that said, the, the way the trend has been going, it's going the other direction, everything is, is one seven five or triads. And so then therefore you're doing the same, exact same thing, you're still narrowing into one demographic, just that smaller.
It'd be interesting to see what's been approved at what size.
What, what size are Mountain View, Jack, are those R one fives or R one seven five?
R one seven five?
Those are big houses.
They're big houses, that they're.
They don't really look that tight to me, and they're big houses. They're all eighteen hundred and fifty houses or foot house.
But if you look at all the ones that have been approved in the last couple of years, are the majority of them one, one seven five, are we not creating that one demographic?
Only I get more. Right, so that's what you're paying for, people are paying, you pay more, so if you're adding more land required, then that's gonna drive the cost, there, there, there's very few things that you can control, right, about the cost, like, we can't control how much it costs people to get construction materials, but that's, that's completely out of control. But as a city, what you can't control is, you know, if you break down, you know, what the cost of a house is, you know, labor, construction materials, um, infrastructure that goes along with the subdivision, right? And then, uh, the cost of the land, right? The view gets to say something about, you know, you don't say about the cost of it, but you get to say something about how much land is required with each unit. Right, but then that can change, uh, the numbers.
We're seeing more and more discussions in this whole region right now about affordability, I think, I don't know if you just saw what Bentonville schools did yesterday.
Yeah.
They're building teacher housing because teachers can't afford to live in Bentonville, so I mean, it's becoming a problem in this whole region just because of.
The, the other part too is, and we talked about this before, like, it's not like one seven five's not allowed.
Yeah.
It's one seven five's allowed as a pod through a process with the planning commission.
But, but what is your process gonna be? I mean, is it gonna be, because, I mean, honestly, the other thing I've seen happen is that, you know, you started out with some pods that made you happy, and then they came back and then you compromised and done something you weren't happy with.
Yeah.
So what point is that, that, are we gonna put some performance standards in the pod that keep you from getting knocked backwards?
That sounds like a bad idea.
Right, and so.
I think that's where y'all have to be strong, and what y'all want to be is for specificity and that.
But it, so to me, if you, if you can agree on some performance standards that would make it better, because I don't, I don't disagree that, you know, that you have different impacts, um, different needs, right, and you have houses that are close to each other, that have less yard space, whatever, and, you know, you talk about the problem of the rear loading and not a whole lot, right, with all the cars and things in the street, and I think, you know, having a little bit of communal space that's somewhat easier. Right, gives people a place to go and recreate, you know, it's not their, their own yard. But to me, those are the two biggest things.
Yeah, I think the rear, you know, I think rear parking on a smaller lot is incredibly important, because you don't have as much street furniture on a small lot to park on. So if you give them that rear parking back there, I think that really helps on a small lot.
Which do we have, any of that in Prager?
No, we have the post, two, and. That's on one, and third went away.
Yeah. So we haven't really experienced it, I mean, we could go to Bayville and experience it, but we haven't experienced it in the.
Right, so, but the other thing too, honestly, the impact of affordability is the time it takes to get to your bottom. So if you make everything that could be affordable housing into a bartering situation, you know, where there's nothing shared, like, that, that they haven't come and asked and you revision, right, and then it ends up taking four months when it could have took one month, right, to get approved, and if you pre decided on what you want to see as far as standards, then, you know, then that adds money to housing too. And, and again, if we can figure out what you want, I don't, to me, there's one.
What if the things we want, we can't dictate without it being a pod?
Well, like what?
Siding.
What?
That's one thing that always comes up. You can't put a performance standard on an exterior, right?
Not, not a zoning, no.
Not a zoning.
Not by ordinance.
So it would have to be through a pod. That's the only way that we could legally have input on that, so we can put the pod in, like you said, and we could put that performance thing in there, so we don't have to fight on it. But we couldn't have it in our zoning, cause now we don't have that control anymore. And that is something that is important for us, like, I mean, it's, it sounds crappy in a way, you know, we sound a little materialistic or fickle, but it is something that is a concern. The bigger towns with the higher densities and the lower quality level of exterior tend to degrade faster than a bigger lot size with a higher quality exterior. It just does, and it's unfortunate, but it just typically does.
Okay, so I would say, all right, I can, I can understand your point there, but then let's make that, then let's make it like a stated performance standard in the pod.
I agree, I agree.
You can still get it on round one, right, so then you're not adding cost, that way you're still getting what you want, right? And it's a more predictable process for everybody.
I can get on board with that.
I can get on board with that.
Sure, cause I mean, that's, that's been like, I mean, I've only been in here for like a couple of months, but that, that comes up every time.
You know?
And it's, and it is a, a bartering system.
It is.
And it's not good, cause like we said, we might not be happy in the end, but we get, we gave here, we got here, and it's like, I'd rather just, that's the standard, right there.
Yeah, so let's do that. You know, what percentage of stuff do I feel like said? Signing, or is it percentage of signing or mayberry, or is it just like materials that you fill?
I think we did percentage on the right line.
The Ross. Yeah.
We, we said no buy.
On that, well, we said on the.
Seventy percent, or something, said.
It was something to allow for like a gable to be.
I, I think you said excluding gables of the front, but that'd be something.
And I think also the second story, we did allowance for.
Right. Well, then once, if that was something you're having, you didn't, you don't worry any on that.
Jack, sure.
All right.
The hand we recorded.
All right, so I like that, I think that's reasonable, to be able about being reasonable and getting what you want prior to the city. So, okay, so let me ask you this, so you said you don't, you really not care about the individual lot size, you just care about gross density? Because I do have the minimum.
We have a lot of emails going back and forth between me and the council and the planning commission about. I think they're, they're okay with developers having some more flexibility with being able to shape their lot footage.
Be for one.
As long as the overall density still stays with the cap one. So, yeah, we make it eight thousand square foot per lot, I think we're good with that, but we don't care if the lot is eighty foot by a hundred foot, or if it's sixty foot by a hundred and twenty foot, as long as it needs to be, that's what I put.
Right, well, to me, um, square foot is still different than, because like, you can have.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, so you want to move to gross density?
We talked about both options, we talked about gross density, and we talked about. Yeah, we talked about just doing a square footage for a lot, I'm not sure anybody really cared either way, as long as the density stays. Is that, does anybody really care? And what she's saying about gross density, um, typically like when R one was the three per acre, right, something like that, that takes a little bit more figuring, because four, four per acre.
So, okay, yeah, so like, so R one.
It won't last that many, by the time you strike streets. The tension and all that stuff.
Yeah.
I don't care, I don't care, we'll come up with a number we're happy with, that's all we care.
I mean, yeah, so I mean, I guess you, we could, we could say right now it's a thousand square feet, or, you know, four units per acre.
And Hudson Heights is a good example of this, I mean, we ended up giving them a blanket variance, cause they really met what we wanted to happen, and that was something around that thousand square foot.
But they had it now.
But they narrowed their footprint down eighty feet and made lot bigger backyards, so they're a hundred and twenty foot deep, and that's been a rarity to find lots with a hundred and twenty foot deep. And we get this all the time, you know, like, in the backyards, or a shed, or a storage. So I had a pretty good track off. So I had pretty a track off.
So like.
I think density is what we're concerned about. Let the development decide how it wants to look at it.
I think we should.
Doug, you're on the council. Like, that sounds accurate.
Alright, so that being then.
For the overall area, the same number of people are gonna live there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can make smaller lots and some bigger lots if they did that.
And we can do it either or as well. Because, I mean.
What are other people thinking about your four?
I can't, I can't. I can't promise square footage of. I mean, seriously, I mean, that's, I think y'all are thinking very correctly. I mean, this is the way to think about it, right? What you, what do you want overall? And how can we get there in the easiest way without, you know, which.
You've got a neighborhood that's kind of a hundred homes. What do we care?
Yeah, if a couple of a lot are spinnier, we're trying to get a road, you know. Whatever, but. Yeah, so I, to me, it takes a lot of. Yeah, but you have to come and ask for variance for seven lots. And that's a lot of time and.
Yeah.
Paperwork that Jackie has to do, crap you have to read and think about. And again.
And there's always variance because you always end up with cul-de-sac lots that are, you know, high shaped and that kind of thing, so.
So I'm into that. I do need to. We should probably have like a. I don't know, what do you think about it? The only thing I was trying to think of is if you can't do it in a whole development.
I thought about.
That you wanna have some sort of minimum for, you know, like, you're just.
One lot?
You're doing two, yeah, two lots or something.
So if it's less than an acre or something like that, that's a five acres, I don't know what number.
Yeah.
Then then it could be on a square. Let's come, let's come up with a uh. Density per acre for each one of those. And try to consider what, like I say, I thought about doing this, but then I got to thinking about it, like four per acre. Same drive when you're looking at ten thousand square foot, but by the time you start the street.
Yeah.
The pension pond, and some of those in farmland and stuff like that, you're actually getting more dance in some days. You know, if you've got a development that's got a super amount of green space.
But I don't think enough.
Yeah, I'm just there.
But if you still have the same total of house in the end. Great, maybe you will with some more green space or.
Basically, this will establish now. Density per acre. I think it's that.
But it's a sort of fucking town. Where we've got a big lot, but then you love it and you're like, I didn't do it.
I like that. Okay, so basically take. The numbers kind of that we have here and switch it to a density cap. Right, so let me just say, so I think that works great if you will be in residential. You know, duplexes, when we get. When we get into multifamily, like actual multi-family, it's gonna change a little bit, right?
Should change.
It should change, right? Because to me, you want to, we want to decide how many stories you want to allow. Right, maximum.
I think that's. Is that in the ordinance now?
Well, it is, yeah, and it's it's more than two.
Well.
Right now, it's like forty five feet for all the.
I was thinking whole that family had a different standard.
Yeah, it goes to sixty feet and you can go higher than fifty feet.
So that'd be three.
So, um, to me, I mean, definitely in like your four parts, it's around like your. The bigger areas of. It's a long bypass area. I I don't know. I wouldn't recommend that you go over thirty.
I I think really, I mean, the fire department needs to be the driver on this because of what they can, you know.
You know, I mean, three story. Structures require ladder trucks for that, so.
Three story, I think you don't have any ladder guns.
Well, what if, like, any three, like, what if it's a town?
Way I have to look at, looks at it is three story buildings. They they expect you to have a ladder truck. Now, when I say they expect you to have it, I mean, you use the dock and and.
You can hurt your eyes over it, if, which is not. If enough.
Yeah, it's alright.
All I can use to.
So right now, you allow three stories.
Yeah, we did that.
Right, so I'll get, is there any three story building thing present?
One.
Where's that? Which one?
The old mill.
That's it.
But it's really not all.
No.
Isn't there one over on um. Giles Road, the one that that has the elevator in it? One of the stories is the walkout basement, but there's two stories above that.
I think bottom story is walkout basement, that's what that classifies. Cause that's, that's where the, that's where the hiding hole is, it's uh, safer.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, it's interesting, you can, instead of probably like, you can play this. But um, I do think it probably takes some account.
Yeah, I I think for the time being, whatever the fire department service probably needs to be standard, but.
But we'll probably address that.
So what's the said two stories? I mean, just thinking about where things have been. Doesn't make this the middle of town that you felt that's a good story. But. If we did start to see, you know, some mixed use of things along the bypass, we're wanting.
Sorry, say, then you're talking. A two story residential above maybe a one story commercial. Now you have reached that third story.
Right, and so.
We talked about that being something that wouldn't be a bad build.
Right, I I mean, I think it could be cool. I don't think you'd wanna, you know, right next to. You know, where you already have development with. You know, different scale. I think that could be really business. So. What if we, if we limit it to two stories? In the interior town and then those areas that are gonna be. You know, along with the bypass. What if, what if we allowed? You know. Two stories, or it could be three with approval of the fire department, which is kind of like. What you got now, so. Now you're only gonna need approval from the fire department, apparently, you go over sixty.
No, so you gotta make your service area, Lincoln, don't they have a lot of turn?
Oh yeah, we've got, I mean, we've got.
Does that satisfy or is that satisfied?
It would, probably wouldn't be an issue unless. In several, I mean, where where they're gonna start looking, kind of like, uh. Probably that. You know, we necessarily, it it deems a song fire flow, because we don't have a fire flow there to. To uh. Meet what they say you're supposed to have, so it's, it's not what it is immediately. This can't, I mean, discredit you. These are the points, it becomes a. Huge factor, so.
And there's, there's a ton of points in that, so if you live a couple years, doesn't necessarily urge you, but.
Okay, so, well, what do y'all think about that?
With approval, that would be sensible.
Of the micro story or?
So, I'm gonna work on the density type, like, so to to me also, like, if you're in, when you get into the multi-family and the mixed stuff. You know, you're gonna want to. Like, you think about a mixed use building, right? Like, what you're talking about where you have. Um, but right now, you're required a certain amount of square footage. Um. Ground, you know, property per multifamily unit. It's actually eighteen hundred square feet right now. Um, and so what happens is, is to. What you usually wanna do is areas where you, where you want people to build up. And you wanna drop that number, right? But if that's, if that's why. Because, because you're not gonna sit a lot of it, there's gonna be zeros that don't ever build up.
I think we've been working on already in the new stuff that we've done.
Okay.
And offset that.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already looked at changing some of those densities as well on multifamily.
Okay, like, make it more dense?
Yes. It's okay. Some of them are out of speed. I don't remember exactly what we did on that. Yeah, didn't work. It was awesome.
Okay, I think, yeah, but, and I guess. On those, when you start doing that, it can, it can make your density numbers look high. But I don't wanna shock anybody. I also wouldn't get real, you know, it's because it says twenty four units per acre doesn't mean that. You know, that's really what's gonna come out, but.
And we do, we have an old ordinance that's still in effect that requires that they have at least fifty percent of the lot area in green space. On the multifamily. So that's really tough on some multifamily because of the parking that's required. Yeah, that was the emergency fair ordinance twenty years ago, but. One of their, one of our home rule. My idea would need to be probably rescinded if you do something different.
Well, and to me, yeah, with multi-family, then you do wanna have, then you have to maybe like. You know, you want to, you do want to have free space of water.
Yeah.
I think it's more, to me, it's not just like the square footage of it, but the quality of it. You're giving people something that's usable. Or you're counting all the little spaces between each double, you know, which to me is what.
Walkways, yeah.
But, which is a hundred percent what people would be asking you to do something differently. But anyway, you know, less than having quality. You know, they, they require that there be amenities and stuff, if you get over a certain number of units. Then, I mean, things like that make a thing, but. Okay, alright, that's good. That's what I'm thinking. Well, I think the old, I think. Um. So the other thing I want to talk to though is. We are introducing townhomes. There's going to be townhomes, not in any of the, not in any of these. Which is not in R one, one point five, one, just in there. And I just added S F E five of them. And again.
About townhomes, what we're talking about. What's definition of townhome?
Just single family attached.
And we have a provision in our ordinance now, and uh, I said, we'll continue, or we can do a town home on. Shared lot, I mean, for the separate ownership, I decided.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's.
Cause to me, if it's not that, then it's not the thing.
And that, we do have a part, cause I'm dealing with this with this right now along Butler Street. Uh, you all had approved it for duplex, and they turned around after they got a duplex, now they wanna do a shared lot. Want the lot split on a piece of property. Our current. Uh, regulations say they have to have these forty foot front end for each unit, and they only have like thirty foot for each unit. And I told them that was, uh, under the current guidelines, they can't do it.
But thirty foot is reasonable for for a townhome, and and the interior ones, right? So you think about it in a way. Your exterior ones are gonna want more more properties so that they have green space on the side, right?
Yeah, a lot of them are twenty foot. Twenty four foot two story is a lot of the lots. I see the floor plan, even twenty foot two story.
Yeah, and uh, interior ones, I mean, I, I would go towards fifteen. Because the. That's a, that's a standard number that you can townhome. And that's just, you know. That's just your interior one. But that's kind of what I have, a three thousand square foot or the. Outside unit and then fifteen hundred square foot lawn and then five for the interior lot. And I think that makes sense, but. Those would only be in their R two, R three, and then we have the mixed use neighborhood.
Quite true, quite true, four apartments could exist.
Yes. And I, and I think that makes sense. And what we did as well. Was we limited how many. Okay, right, in R two, a maximum of two attached. Townhome, like, to me, that makes sense, right? R three, you could have a maximum of one, right, of eight. Neighborhood mixed, I do think to me is less offensive, that's the area that's. South, south of like downtown. Like right now, it's like R three and more.
Elder apartments area and all the rest of it, most of that.
So that, you know, I put. See, that's a little bit less than the R three, so but like a maximum of one or six attached, right? So you're not gonna get a whole block, you know, no bricks, so then you wanna keep them in scale. With what goes on. And if you don't like those numbers, we can talk about different numbers. Now, the neighborhood corridor, that's the one that follows, um.
Miller?
Yes, thank you, Miller. Um, and uh, and what we've talked about. Not wanting that to, like, the part that faces the, you know, the roadway, right? We wanted it to kind of. Remain mixed use and not be just like all townhomes, because that would really change the character. But I actually didn't.
The only part of town, and I think there was a desire to keep it the only part.
Yeah, so I didn't put town, townhome lot there, but, anyway, so. Um, and then when you get into.
It's nice to see every house on that name, right? Running maybe.
And then when you get back into the business, this is. Eight and we roll on. I mean, a lot of times, you see. What do y'all feel about that?
The numbers are confusing. You gave us the sheet one time that had like a visual aid with it. That was a lot better. This right here.
You're struggling?
Yeah.
I can put some browse.
But you did give us the packet the one time that y'all sent out before we had the meeting where it was like. Here's these townhouses, here's what we call it, here's these townhouses, here's what we call it. So that, that definitely didn't fit. And if you were posting this somewhere, most builders understand, but. You might even have a link to that for each one or something.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do it with little five grand sheet. But I don't usually do diamonds, so I don't remember.
Yeah. The only thing we're trying to focus on is. The density and size, but like you say, it's hard to visualize.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like you were talking about the interior lot being a certain size? Okay, I don't know. What does that mean? For small feet.
You can look at the training though.
There's no voting though, take place if I was to leave.
Okay, bud?
I said, there's no voting or anything that would have to have me, right? Right? In a ball game. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
They read in our security protocol, everyone, appearing, it's working very well.
When I logged in, his dad said we've security, so they needed to like it.
So, I don't know, anyway, okay, well, I, I can get using it.
The guy that requested.
Yeah, yeah, we can move on from there.
What about, okay, so what about non-residential, um, and. I guess like, to me, like, if you're at a commercial, it makes sense though, and I'm not worried about what size for non-residential. But for your, um. Like your R one and R one point five. And those, what would you want? You want the minimal lot files for that, for like, oh, what you love, and then start to avoid that.
You mean for something outside of residential?
You, you not, like, if there's something done R one, if they want to put church or school on there, then they would do something else?
No, they can do it anywhere, no, but there's some, there's a requirement, there's requirements for those uses. In R one, in any of them, for minimum levels, and I don't remember what they are, but there are requirements.
So, but do you want to keep that?
I think it needs to be, I mean.
But to me, you, I don't know, I mean, depending on what.
Maybe more, more important than the lot size is probably the setbacks. It, it, uh, I mean, you put a church in the middle residential, or a school in the middle, there needs to be sufficient setbacks. From the residential, you wouldn't want a building right against the property. That's why I'm usually using.
Well, and there's also parking departments.
Based on the apartment, and that's going to take a lot of.
Alright, so then the other differences I want to talk about was in the mixed use. So, like, right now, I know a lot, like, you have, like, kind of standard twenty five foot in the back. But. So, do lurk in the way around the town. Well, you know, there's a lot of areas that are, I mean, it's not anywhere near that.
Kind of the old part, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're having like nine feet, ten feet, eight and a half feet.
But four's up.
Right, but I guess my question is. Do we want to kind of look at something that, to me, if you're, if you're putting an infill development. And it's setback two and a half times, what everything else is, to me, that's weird, you know, and, and it's not probably.
We, we don't deal with a lot, but we have had some infill in the last fifteen, twenty years, quite a bit of infill. And typically, the lot sizes don't match requirements or anything else, and what we require a build is just go through awareness process on those.
So, right, but which you can do, or we can set something up to where, you know. If you want to keep your twenty five feet or whatever for R one, but, you know, it's going in the infill area. Then what you can do is you can look at like what's going on on that like block face, basically, seeing that you can do twenty five feet or. Or look at what's going on that block face and, you know, basically put you roughly in line with what is already there. You want to get variance or anything to it. Right, and you all have to read through stuff, and I mean, you basically just be honoring what's there.
Where does that lead you if you've got street, this thing's street, and you've got a house here, next lot has a mess here. Next lot has a house here, and what's in line? I mean, at that point, you go to the one that's closest to the street, or you take an average?
Yeah, usually you can be kind of like an averaging.
Because I think that's going to put more burden on me and Jackie and the people that have to be trying to figure out whether or not it's compatible or not. But, I mean, I don't have a serious headache over that, but.
Well, we, we also have to consider, we've got sidewalk requirements, we have parking requirements. If we've got a ten foot setback on that house, there, I mean, where are they going to park? You know, because we have a sidewalk requirement, we have a green space requirement.
If, if there's already a parking issue with the house that's right here now, because there's not enough room for you to park. Are we going to let another one do the same thing by next door?
Well, okay, but you still have parking there, so right now you require three, the parking option. They still have to meet that, but you don't get to not meet that, so that means that your garage has to be setback further, you know what I'm saying, or whatever. Then, fine. Um, and then, I mean, your sidewalks usually go in the driveway lot. So then that shouldn't include that, because that's going to be.
And only if you have a ten foot driveway. And then parking their monster truck in, in front of the garage.
Most of the time, they're not competing, that's, we deal with this more than we do. The setback aspect, but most of the time, it's because the law's too small, you know, it's an infill lot, they torn a house down.
That was a little tiny house.
So they want to tear down and put up a new house.
Job it.
And a lot happened in that zone because it takes back to the eighteen hundreds.
For the lot with twenty five feet.
Make some kind of allowance for those too, or does that need to go for various?
But the minimum's high.
Yeah, we say a lot of times, even five thousand square foot lots, because, you know, they're from eight year ago.
To me, you should just have a linked statement, but, you know.
And having a house there better than having a big lot, obviously.
Right, right, and then all, everything that's a pre-existing flat lot, you're not making a new one, somebody in the past decided that was okay. And you should be able to pass on it. So, to me, that's a pretty standard thing that people have. But you're not a disallow.
Some of these flats go back to the eighteen hundreds. And a lot of these lots are twenty five foot lots, and it was defined as seventy five foot lots, if they're lot three lots, or a fifty foot lot, they're lot and lot. The majority of the original town, ten foot lots, which didn't think it had to do anything.
Well, we'll find a way that makes you, like, might as well, and you're figuring out what their setback should be. Like, nobody should have to, like, drive in there. Just go to submit, then, you know, show the measure, you know, what are the two closest houses or whatever, and Google map.
I'm all for simplifying any process. But I just. I just see this kind of backfired at some point.
Just blanket it?
Yeah. City planning department doesn't like it, they can kick it, make them come to the council, go to the local.
Men don't like it, you can just like not like it.
Hey, ask if you wouldn't even ask for a variance, just be saying where you're, it's an old block.
An old block. One of, there's, there's two reasons why you have to park them. This is just some of the top times, because I get this phone call a lot, there's two reasons to have the front setback. One is for the adequate parking, but the other is for visibility, when people are turning corners and stuff like that, especially when you get close to the corner. Houses are crowded, two blocks in the street, you can't see well. Uh, you got a neighbor here, this is an empty lot here. And suddenly somebody built another house here, and the view that they've had for fifty years disappeared, and I get it, but that's not maybe a. Legitimate blame, but we'll get that. People complain all the time about their vehicle disappearing.
We're, we're trying to, we're trying to bypass the, we're all trying to make it easier on, on people and try to bypass. But since you're worried about a blanket statement, I, I mean, how many times do we get that variance a year?
Twice maybe, couple thousand years.
Is it worth taking a chance on a blanket statement to just? As a byproduct that, the, two developers coming in acting for a variance on, on that issue? If, if we're worried, you know what I'm saying, if, if you really, you have forty four years of experience in this town, and if you, if you say, and I'm, I'm kind of cautious on this one.
We, we honestly don't have a whole lot of opportunity for infill, other than old houses being torn down and replaced. Will always be that, but there are not a whole lot of empty land in town.
Probably Alex will be back asking for some sort of variance, depending on what side of the building, county's going to. It's going to be a two story, so it should be.
And it's a B two zone, so there, there are.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I would say, where they have to come back, I mean, I'd rather give a variance and open, just open a door. Free game or whatever.
I mean. Just so you know, technically, variances are not supposed to be something that you get. On a situation that can be replicated. One block away, variances are supposed to be something that's unique to that property.
Based on hardship.
Right, and to me, if, if you have a, if the hardship. Is that you have a setback bond that doesn't.
My interpretation would be, the hardship would be, the lot is pre-existing to zoning ordinance. And doesn't comply with the current zoning codes, that is what creates the hardship. So it's just a moment. Because I agree a hundred percent, we go, we talk about this every time, we go, there is, there has to be something inherent with the land. And it can be lot configuration, it can be lot size, it can be, I think I even said that in our order, that it can be based on lot size. But the Julie's point is you make something where it still has, also a variance. You curve the amount of variance that's going to improve, and so that becomes, all the placement variance will come up, will happen.
Oh, well, it's bond, you know, here, here's the thing. Is it, you really want every variance to be truly unique. Because what you don't want is that, like, you're repolling that back variance, and then two blocks. Somebody else is that interfering, and like substantively, like, things are pretty much the same, then he gets the nod. You know, then, like, if we, then, then there's legal.
But the family on the other side of that, that's, that's what's bothering me about the other approach. Uh, we're making, uh, we're making a judgment. If it's an empty lot, we're making a judgment based on the other properties there, what that distance should be. And anytime you're making a judgment, you may not make that same judgment on the next street over, you may. Deviate from that just a little bit, you're going to get sorry, be letting him build that one, you won't let him build this.
Well, but, but if you have your parameters for setup for how you make your decision.
There needs to be something in writing that says how that's.
Yeah, right, but that's what, that's what we're saying, this is what.
And if you've got three houses setback at different ranks, I mean, what do you do? You try to figure out what the average of those is, I think that, and I do.
Usually I was the first to the one, you know, the first back, it's right next to it, and you beat the one.
I can think of some where one is ten foot from the street, and the other one's fifty foot back, we're not going to let you go fifty foot back, so.
Well, then, yeah, you're right, we could, we could look at it.
Got some places where there's houses behind houses.
Let me, let me bring you, I have a couple of like setbacks.
Okay, now, I mean, give me some, give me some. I really don't care either way, I'm just, I, I guess what was bothering me is we were going to be making some kind of a judgment. On a case by case basis, and I think that would get us in trouble. Because Jackie may look at it one way, and I might look at it another, and then the next guy that does it's going to scream at whoever got it better. And then they're going to go to the mayor, and the mayor's going to get upset.
And someone will go to the council and not be invited, yeah, but.
No, it'll be easily. But yeah, if we have something that defines how that's established, that's fun.
So, on the central business district. Like, basically, it says you have zero lot line. Um, but I know that, you know, one of the issues that you have, you know. You don't have any requirement that you do build two.
And I think it's zero outbound on the sides, and in front, but in there's something on the back. I'm just thinking that requires access to the back.
Oh, I think if there is an alley, then it, then it's the, you have the space to pour.
Yeah. Behind the, oh, what side of the square, we don't know then. Behind the school admin, that's not our. Rabbit. Have the one, we didn't used to have one on Pender before. We didn't use to have one on the south side, but that'd be just back in the nineties.
So, in the central business district, what I was thinking is that you would want. What I did is that just say a zero lot line. So that on the front, you have a build two zone, where you have to be. Like, you have to be within zero to fifteen feet from the street. And it doesn't have to be fifteen, you say twenty up on, well, well, we don't want this. I don't know what that is, but. Yeah, you don't want, and then you want to be, not hate one. We're saying, you know, if we had. So, it would, it would make cool, you know, you're building up towards the street. And I, I would like to put, you know, that you have to basically have a minimum. Run it, like, percentage of your front, it has to contain a building. Right, if you're going to build buildings, then you have to, if, whatever. So, it has to be within here, fifteen feet of the street, right, so you can maintain that street scape. Uh, then, say, or fifty percent of your building, however, needs to be within that zone.
Yeah, and I think it's important down town, especially if you have a system. Especially, I mean, like, Pender's, that's on gas station, obviously, that's a very setback.
Wow.
We, we get. If you ever turn it down, build something new.
Right, you want to be closer to it.
But then, did you do that, or are you parking, or are you just going to park it back, or?
Fatville has a lot of that now, and that's what they do, they require either side parking or rear parking, I think. And they're trying, trying to get that feel of you on sidewalk, and here's the front of the mill. That was almost seven fifteen, but seven two more back, so I'm thinking of running downtown, who's left on.
Well, we could, I mean, we could, I'm saying it's not that you need an option, because then it allows, like, you can still have, like, you could have an area of, like, some outdoor seating and stuff, you know.
Especially if there's a cafe or.
Yeah. But, all right, if you're gonna have on-street parking, you'll have to.
We have.
Is that, is that?
Part of the thing is, of course, you know, that's. Just, we, we've actually started from the front, that's what we've cut a bunch of the projects down. Second thing hasn't been yet, so.
Like, that would be about fifteen feet, actually. Do you want? That would be about fifteen.
Yeah, probably.
Part of this base, but, yeah.
It's probably, I think.
Which one, where it's got the, the seating area?
Probably if you go fifteen fifty, right away or.
One fifty-one or.
Building at the sidewalk, it would be.
The best portion of Monday day's set up. There you go. Yeah, like, yeah, full car with parking there, so that looks basically.
And again, it wouldn't impact me much, but. Yeah, I'll say, when you create those new zones, I don't know how you come up with it. You know, let's say you are, you know, or whoever. That you allow, basically, when you allow additions. They may to even a greater extent than you would allow in other districts without having to come into compliance with it, because it is a really different thing, right? To make somebody pull their building to the street if they're seventy feet away from the street, you know, the. And so we don't wanna discourage, you know, kind of adaptive, inclusive thing, but if somebody's gonna knock the building off, like.
Yeah, it needs to, clearly, but anything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see much coming down, where I still have to deal with that, Larry, but we, we probably really need to look at what we're gonna do with public parking. Going forward, because if something like that, where Mike was tearing it down and had to move it and lost parking. I mean, theoretically, we just lose parking downtown again.
But we can, yeah, we can have a discussion. Right now, Central Business District doesn't have parking parks. So, anything parking-wise does become kind of a public problem as opposed to a business problem.
Do you have parking on these sides, should there be on-street parking on my lawn?
Yeah, and we own, we own the majority of this parking lot now, there's still a couple of parking, you know. There's another big parking lot back here. School primarily fail out. What, school?
Because of the art of harvest, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
We, 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 we're very continuously, I haven't looked, sorry.
But, but, I mean, to me, that.
It's adequate for right now in, in centers, and some days we're busy in town, so. I don't think we've had any big parking issues other than maybe big events.
Yeah, I just think it comes down to growth of the city and, you know, we get another two thousand in population over the next five years and, and more visitors and. Then we probably start seeing it really tighten up downtown.
Yeah, and I didn't talk about the issues, I talked to one of the individuals involved in the possible food court.
Yes.
And I told them they still need to really approach the city if they're gonna consider using part of our parking.
I don't think it would be a reason to sacrifice your shit.
I think streets going downtown is really important.
Yeah.
Fayetteville's adopted something for blocking, okay, that's why you see some of those new buildings that are really so close to the street now, and they're putting all the parking behind.
And I think we, we put that, we put them there for all the mixed use. District, oh my God, oh. But we did, we limited parking, you know, like you could only do thirty percent of the parking in the front. For the residents to be to the side or rear. Which keeps you from having a, you know. Well, there's still other convenience of having a couple of rooms of parking up front, you know, people can still run in and out, but. You don't have to. Okay. On an accessory structure. Do you have any? Okay, is, is the way the accessory structure is now, are they look like you wanna do anything different?
Um, right now, it's eight foot, we're spare apartment, like ten foot of existing buildings. Is there a need for the ten-foot setback existing buildings from a fire stand, boy, and I think that's originally probably why that got put in there, but. Is there a real reason, because I know that, that becomes an issue for us a lot.
Well, it's a, it's a building code requirement, that's why there's a five-foot setback on.
Your son.
Um, in R one seven five, you know.
Well.
All those things, it becomes necessary to have, um, some sort of fire separation.
Okay, my question comes back, is the ten-foot necessary for either building codes, reasons, or required?
Both.
So, going down to a five, but I know we grabbed a variance to paint a guess, you know, on one reason. To the problem. Well, I think if they did.
Maybe only if it's a research, like, we want to.
I mean, I'd rather not deal with it on a variance basis, if there's a valid reason for having a ten, we leave it at ten, but I, I don't know what that is. And that's kind of more D C injection than this thing.
I hope, is it, I mean, I ain't got that far in the new code, did it change anything this year or the?
I, to my knowledge, it hasn't, you just have to, I mean, with any zero wall lines, you have to have.
Firewall.
Wall, you know, with any, anything closer than ten feet, and if it's two-story, then it's, it's even.
Even store stuff, store buildings.
It's a building.
Okay.
It's a structure.
Okay, is there a reason for it to be there?
I mean, if it's. So, he did.
I guess he was sorry.
This catches on fire, the house catches on fire.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's just a real issue, especially, you know, nowadays, for people to have enough room in their backyard to build anything.
Well, and that's only, it's only enforceable if it's over a hundred and sixty square feet, if they want to put up a little.
Ten by sixteen.
Ten by fifteen building, they can't.
Yeah.
Right up against their house. Because it's portable, it doesn't have electricity to it and.
Okay, so, you know. Fifty-three percent of the apartment was all there. They're all based on design. They have to be compatible with this, but they can't be metal, e-ops or anything like that. That's for a huge.
That's fine, do you wanna add some, um, commercial design standards for, like, in regards to materials for, like? My, of course.
Hmm. Twenty-five year bike to get it for downtown, but then they're pretty minimal, but we could have one downtown. I can see maybe. It'd be a. Up down, you know, you know, that, that's fine. Doug, what do you think, you're in the council? Do you think the council would support it? I know we have a lot of discussion, just get him for downtown.
Well, yeah, this, this is all big.
This thing. Yeah, see.
Get the battlefield over, like, battlefield park at the same time, but I had. Uh, quite honest, I had a different city council man. Craig Collins. And he was. He didn't want anything that dictated design.
What about paid parking lots on the.
That's required.
It is, though.
Yeah. Now, it does asphalt. It's a desperation.
It's a room.
Talks about asphalt. On storage facility where they're storing material, I think they can do like children's seal, but never anybody.
Thank you.
But that's only in specific contract area.
From a stormwater perspective. Um. Herbius is probably. Better. You know, if it was gravel or something, you know, from, from a flooding perspective, getting soaked in instead of run off. But.
Yeah, but we know what happens, grab park, but.
That's weird.
They don't, but nice, we're on the one.
Here's Dan.
Thanks, Rob, about that, huh?
I think we did a lot of Fetter do that, around stored buildings.
Around stored buildings, because these are on the creek where there's already flooding issues. We have a variance. So, the people are.
And I think that was.
Yeah, even there, it's already flooded.
But, and then like along, like your missed these districts that are along the by-pub, not, maybe it's gonna happen anyway, but, um. Making cross-accel required.
Yes, that's, that is in our new code, it's something about the jet.
Okay.
Uh, everything on the bypass now requires, uh, either connect adhesion for. The next business connect to, I can't remember how it works, requires continued access. Because those entrances off the highway are limited to every six hundred and sixty feet.
Class, okay. Uh, I got, yeah, maybe I need to see some of the stuff they're doing to make sure they're not. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, honestly, that's most of it, there's some. Stuff about, we did put some multifamily design standards in. They are somewhat like families, but, uh, took some of the stuff out, but.
Is that in here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
So, we can just talk about that, if you don't, you know, I'll just. I think that we've done.
I think that is something you all wanted to look at, right, all that family design performance, design standard.
I'm weird.
You may not have been at the meeting about that. Well, that would be.
I think you should, um, if you're gonna, I think if you don't have them, then it's, that's, it's a fight. If you want the. Yeah. Single family.
You know, when you're gonna allow them to build one, or anything like.
Remember, it's a lot of apartments telling us how nicely they'll be maintained.
Mm-hmm.
Well, which, which.
Well, our largest complex of apartments, we remain that promise about how nice they would be.
Well, for me.
Age is saying that it's tall.
Quality materials to your form. That takes some of the, you know, question of, about how people make that.
Yeah, people won't, they won't make multifamily house, they would live without a dog.
But, but on the other side of that, I mean, those are probably the only thing that's affordable for an overall payment.
True, it's not a lot. Rent's expensive, I seen one down.
He's still renting some of those for six hundred.
That's cheap.
Yeah.
His house over there. Seventeen seventy-five, ready to load.
All those, I don't know, ninety hood.
But, but to the affordability question, I think we talked a little bit about those, you know. What happens is, you know. The cost and buying and moving out is so high. Right, that's, uh, and, yeah, and interest rates are so high, it's, you know, to me, a lot of people. Who your rentings are is changing, but, you know, I mean, it's people that, you know. Used to be able to afford a house, cannot afford to buy a house now. You know, and so I, I do think that, uh, just the way that you think about rental properties and things, the stigma that some people assign to that. So, that is changing too, that everything is changing, and you have to kind of take that into consideration, and. A lot of the, I think if you allow. More and more affordable properties, like single-family residential. Then you're gonna have more buyers, but if you, you only develop the bigger lots, there are just less people that can buy, and quite honestly, a lot of those are. Of what I've seen in some other communities.
I think external. People or groups or whatever is buying up stuff, other states get calls all the time.
But a lot of them are buying, managing those rentals, things that used to be single-family houses on the market.
Very much.
And we've seen a lot of our rentals actually convert in the last year, because they were able to sell them for such a price that they sold them. We have a company, sold with good quality in their inventory because prices were up.
Well, they bought it by them.
I know, one of those happened Sunday, they weren't rentals, they're not any.
True.
Did you know the article that was in the paper a couple days ago? About, um. Density and, uh, Fayetteville, not, I feel, not for that, it's literally, you not send it out to the, to them. I realize it's Fayetteville, it's not very good, but, but it's, it's data-driven, of course. About how many people are gonna move, you know, into northwest, or, 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 pride, and what, or, you know, Fayetteville. Well, it's not the same numbers as y'all, you know, you're still gonna have your own pot of answers.
But your looks, man.
Right, and, and what it's gonna take to house, is if you keep the same lower density development patterns, you know, then basically what they said, that to house, a number of people that are coming. Fayetteville, then they would take an area, area that was sixty-five, I think, percent. Of the, of the area that's the city now, the city of Fayetteville. However, if you concentrated on, you know, smaller laws and multifamily development, then you could capture them, you know, in. Much more area, you know.
Well, is it gonna self-correct, like, maybe not exactly Detroit example, but, that was driven by business more, but. I mean, eventually it's gonna self-correct, just because prices can go up and.
Well, that is some, that is something you've gotta think about, you think of the picture of development is. Yeah, Goshen's a good example. I mean, Goshen has requirement for huge lot sizes and has for a long time. And Goshen, Goshen spans square, I don't know how many square miles, but it's five times the size per year with a fraction of the population. It's not very efficient when you're spending money on utilities trying to make.
No.
And, uh, you know, that's one thing everybody complains about here, is that we're losing all of our pastures and green space. And the larger the lot, the pasture, that green space is gonna disappear because they're having to expand farther farther.
People are trying to get away from that.
Yes, pretty nice.
A lot, a lot.
It's an interesting article, also, also, indeed, and, you know, don't worry, you know. And I realize it's not apples that, or, because it's Fayetteville, but I think it's a. It's more than just like rhetoric or, you know, and.
Fayetteville's a different animal, because forty percent of their population is transitioned.
Right, but I just think this is the sheer number of space, you know, amount of space we're talking about. It's just, it's a very different equation.
I think right at forty percent of their population is student.
Thanks. Training.
So, I, I don't know, it, it's just, it's interesting to think about, and, um. I think, to me, though, we're doing a lot of good things, I think, putting these mixed use. And I think, to me, though, we're doing a lot of things, I think putting these mixed use districts in place. And like having that kind of growth that's gonna happen, you know. In a way, that's not gonna impact, you know, kind of the feel and interior that you have. Right now in the city, but you're still able to add just different housing types.
I think they have that flexibility for developers. Instead of having every cookie cutter lot look the same, every house would look the same. Uh, so I think people always complain about they drive through neighborhoods and they can't tell if they're. Which neighborhood are they, do they all look the same?
So, anyway, I think, I think y'all are doing a lot of this stuff and I'm liking this out.